I'll let you go my key words.
Meeting come to order. Welcome to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Unfortunately, you're down there, George, but we need roll call, please.
Pledge of allegiance?
No, not tonight. All right, we'll do the pledge again.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baaco?
Here.
Commissioner Godioso?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Commissioner Neary?
Here.
Michael Pierce? Lisa Catania? And myself, George Needles, still present.
We'll open up the floor to the public if there's any comments again tonight. My left, second row, rear, take note. That's great to hear. Take note, no public comment tonight. We have a small presentation for the, George Needles is going to give to us tonight for the 2024 budget.
Good evening, everybody. As Commissioner Rakowski mentioned, my name is George Needles. I'm the township manager here in Upper Chichester Township. And tonight I will be presenting you on the 2024 Upper Chichester Budget, which is in front of you for consideration tonight.
Game over.
Care with me one second while I work out the keys. Andrew, who usually handles the IT, is in the islands tonight, so he's not able to assist us. So again, the 2024 Upper Chichester Budget presentation, just a few things to note tonight, we're going to be going over what the priorities are in the budget, a quick recap of what we accomplished in 2023, and then some of the 2024 expectations that we'll be able to accomplish through this budget. We'll go over the budget process, and then we'll dive, we'll do a quick dive into some of the numbers to better understand the budget. So first thing is our budget priorities. So these are the items that we set out at a very high level early in the year and say, what do we want to accomplish through this budget next year? The first thing that we do is we are now with the adoption of the community heart and soul value statements. We ensure that everything we do gets tested to these value statements here to ensure that we're meeting the priorities of the community. We'd like to, as we mentioned earlier in the CDBG hearing, we like to build on prior successes. We find projects that build on prior projects that we've done, or, you know, build on prior successes we might have had through changes to administration or different departments. We are always looking forward and preparing for the short term as well as the long term. So we don't like to get lost in just doing things in the now. We like to look at them and say, what kind of long-term impact does that have on the community? How can we have a positive long-term impact on the community, as well as continue to serve the day-to-day operations? And then this is my favorite that we do each year is solvency. So we ensure that we have cash, budget, service, and long-term solvency. So what does that mean? Cash solvency, we'd like to make sure we have enough money in the bank to do everything that we need to do. Service solvency, we'd like to ensure that our services levels are maintained and increased, never decreased. So budget, annually, we do a effective zero-based budget, so that we, we, we don't try to dip into reserves to balance the budget. From time to time, that does happen, but most times we're able to produce a modest surplus. And then long-term solvency is looking at big-picture items and saying, what are these items that we can do that can set us up for a great financial future? So a good example of that would be when we floated the bonds for the OPEB trust fund and the pension funds, effectively mortgaging the program as opposed to renting. So for 2023, what happened in 2023 and what were we able to accomplish through the budget? First and foremost, as you can see on the podium up there, we were awarded the Governor's Excellent Award for Promoting Economic and Community Revitalization. So, you know, that's something that we'd like to build off of. We'd like to continue to get recognized for our successes. We accomplished and completed the first portion of the Chichester Avenue streetscape. That was a very big catalyst project for us, effectively changing the way Chichester Avenue looks and feels for a large portion of our town. We addressed a longstanding stormwater issue in the Boothland Highlands section of the town by completing the Boothland Highlands Stormwater Project. During Hurricane, I believe it was Irene, we found that the Tower Circle Basin needed a drastic repair project, so that project was completed this year. We purchased and preserved open space on Greenwood Avenue, which eventually will be connected into Peach Street Park to make a nice, large outdoor open space area for that section of the town. We, the Board of Commissioners adopted the Master Parks and Rec Open Space Plan. That is the first ever Master Parks, Rec, and Open Space Plan in Upper Chichester history. The Twin Oaks Village Neighborhood Plan and the Boothland Heights Neighborhood Plan were both completed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And happy to report, for the second year in a row, we were awarded over a million dollars in grant funding. I just actually found out today that we were awarded another grant to send a police officer for training on how to handle traffic stops involving medical marijuana. And then another big thing that we did was we implemented the recommendations from the Trash Collection Route Efficiency Study that was done over the course of COVID. All in all, we believe we had a pretty good year in 2023. We built off of a lot of successes in 2022. And those are projects and things that we completed. There's a lot of things that we are currently working on in the pipeline. You're going to see some of them as completion items that we wanted to do in 2024. Some of them are longer-range items that we are working on. So let's go to some of the expectations for 2023. In 2024, the Kingsman Road Park Project is complete, and we will be under construction hopefully by early spring on that project. That project will completely rehabilitate that park, turning it more into a regional destination as opposed to the quaint neighborhood park it is right now. It definitely needs some TLC. This project will include pickleball courts, a meandering walk trail, a center green, parking space that is designed for food trucks during events, bocce courts, new, new play equipment for toddlers to like pre-teens, and will really, really lift that up area up, as well as some improvements to Chichester Avenue, including a left-hand turn lane into that roadway. In addition to that, we will be acquiring and demoing 2409 West Colonial Drive. That is a project that we received hazard mitigation funding from. That project is fully funded, ready to go. We've received community development block grant for the Johnson Avenue Sidewalk and Roadway Improvements Project, similar to some of the stuff that you saw in your packet for the Twin Oaks Neighborhood. We'll be using bumpouts and widening to try to create standard parking spaces. Parking spaces, sidewalk and curb improvements, as well as ADA parking for the Johnson Avenue Park. That'll build off some of the other components that we had. The Limwood Heights Sinage Project will be underway and finished. That is another community development block grant project. That project includes new streetplades with the Limwood Heights neighborhood seal on them. It includes a historical marker to be placed in the vicinity of the park that explains some of the history of that neighborhood down there, as well as a new park sign for the Johnson Avenue Park. And then, as mentioned in the CDB Community Development Grant Hearing as well, earlier, the McKay Avenue Stormwater Project. This is a project to install valley curb and make some improvements in the Boothland Town Center, in the more residential areas to assist with the stormwater issues that they are having. In addition to those projects, we have some high-level things that we've been working on from the planning side. So the past couple of years, we've been working on the formation of a stormwater authority, and we are getting very close to being able to solidify this and proceed forward with the, with the Upper Chichester Stormwater Authority, a municipal authority that will be put in place to effectively handle stormwater issues, improvements, permitting, and everything else for Upper Chichester Township. Police Department is going through a very exciting time. They are currently working on getting accredited through the state, so we've received grant funding for them to go through that process. We are hopeful that that will be done in 2024 and will become a fully accredited police department. The Historic Property Survey update is underway. The last windshield study was done in 1983 for historical properties. We received grant funding and have started working on that project with the help of members of the Historical Society. The Gardendale Neighborhood Plan is underway. We had our planning session for that, and we are working on getting together the list of the various projects for that area. The Larkins Corner Neighborhood Plan, same as Gardendale, is underway. And then this is a very exciting one. Boothland Town Center is going to get a new zoning district. This zoning district is aimed at really solidifying that main corridor through Chichester Avenue as a central place of economic and civic activity, as well as there will be an overlay district, which is a neighborhood historic preservation, neighborhood preservation overlay, which is aimed at preserving the neighborhoods around that area. In addition to that, we will continue to our mission of grant funding acquisition. We're trying to accumulate as much money as possible, while the interest rates are very high. Borrowing for, for these projects does not make sense at this time, so we are trying to acquire as much grant funding as possible, so that we can effectively use your tax dollars. We have a focus in our police department on advancing technology and community policing. These are two things that we are working, building our, building our brand and our reputation within the neighborhood, as well as, you know, ensuring that the officers have leg up on the bad guys with all the latest technology that will assist them to clear crimes much quicker. In community policing, this is things like our National Night Out, our Shop with Cop Program that was mentioned at our last meeting, very successful, great program, and all the program that the officers do at the schools and out in the neighborhoods. It's really great. Police departments are working really hard. We are working to expand rec services. So with the adoption of the PROS Plan, we've saw, found that there are some deficiencies compared to other size, similar-sized municipalities in the amount of parks. We have a variety of recreational activities and recreational services. So the board has, we welcomed a new employee to our rec department. For the first time in history, we now have two individuals in our rec department. That individual is responsible for recreation programming, and will be working to put on various different programming, indoor and outdoor, throughout the year. Looks like the kickoff is going to be in January with a pickleball tournament hosted here at the Fury Road Fieldhouse. Like we do every year, we will continue to work on our capital projects and planning projects going forward. Always looking to keep that backlog of potential projects, so that when something comes out and the project matches, we can align a project with available funding. This has significantly helped us with our ability to acquire grants, and it's really helping us get a name for ourselves among all the grant funding agencies. And then we will continue to evaluate, invest in staffing to add capacity to our organization. This is one thing that I think is extremely important to our organization here, is to continuously look at what our gaps are and say, how do we get better and how do we do more? We don't just want to hire people to divvy the work up among more people. We want to make sure with every hire, we add capacity, we add skill sets to the organization, and also we become less reliable on external partners. So for instance, a good example of this is with adding, in the accounting department, over the years, we've added a lot of accounting skill to the department. And in doing that, we were able to pull back on our contract with our auditors, and no longer is there a need for quarterly compilations to be completed, because our staff is fully capable of doing all that in-house. So, we're, there's a prescribed process that is required by law that we are supposed to go through for the budget. However, we do our own process, which includes that, takes it a step further. Typically, we start in the month of June, and we run through the month, through the month of December for our budgeting cycle. Through June, starting in June, we're having the, we start the preliminary meetings, asking all the department heads to get together the wish lists, any equipment needs that they have for the year, anything that they need, might need additional funding over prior year commitments. It's also when we prepare all of our spreadsheets. We input any of the information that is contractual, that we know is going to be consistent and not change. And so, you know, in June, then we start our internal meetings. We hold those internal meetings every month, June through December. Every month, starting in July through December, each department head is required to submit a reforecast, where they anticipate what their revenues and what their expenditures will be through the end of the year. This is a very good process that gets them all to better understand the money involved and the finance involved in their business. They do a great job of looking at what their expenditures are, when they're going to come through. This has helped us from time to time, when maybe we have like something that has 12 payments throughout the year, and only 10, we've only received invoices for 10. They're able to catch that quicker, and it really helps us overall become a more fiscally responsible organization. We have public meetings. We start those public meetings in August. There's a public meeting in August, September, and October, where we discuss various portions of the budget and where we are at in the process. We then go for preliminary adoption in November. Once the preliminary adoption happens, we, we go ahead and advertise any and all necessary items related to the budget. That is the budget. If there's any change to the real estate milletage that would need to be adopted, any ordinance or any changes to the fee schedule to assist in funding that. And then we come to you tonight with final adoption of the budget, where we have proposed a budget renewal deal. Let's talk about the numbers. So the 2024 Upper Chichester Township Budget, budget information. So our general government, police, fire, MS, sanitation, debt service, 2024 revenues expected to be fifteen million, seven hundred and forty-three hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with expenditures matching the same. Some of the key elements related to revenue, the earned income tax here in Upper Chichester is one percent. That means unchanged. The local service tax is fifty-two dollars per employee working in the township. That is unchanged. Real estate tax is three point zero three five two mils. That is unchanged. And the trash collection fee is three hundred and five dollars, which is a sixty-five dollar increase. I know that looks like a very large increase. When we break it down over twelve months, and then over the amount of collections that you get, it's a relatively small amount. The reason that is so high, though, is because for, historically, we have not charged the amount in the collection fee required to cover the costs for the department. So we've worked with the board to come up with a three-year plan to increase that, so that the fee for the individuals who have trash, trash collection will completely cover the cost for trash collection. We changed last year in the way that we collect trash and recycling, and we've seen no impact to the, which is good. We've seen no impact to the actual costs related to it. Our impacts to our costs are coming just because of additional labor costs. So as everyone ages up a year, they, obviously their wages increase. The collection fees, the tipping fees for trash is higher every year. And last year and this year, we expect to get pummeled again from recycling. Recycling this year ranged from us paying ninety-five a ton up to about a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton for disposal. If you take that back to even just ten years ago, we would be paid somewhere between five to fifteen dollars per ton. So that's a, that's a dynamic shift that we are, we are chasing and trying to, to figure out. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of where the revenue comes from and kind of see, you know, how that plays out. So the orange down there, the earned income tax, that is six point two million dollars. Forty percent of our budget is paid for by the earned income tax. The dark blue on the right, twenty-eight percent, that's roughly four point five million. That's real estate taxes. There is good, really good news with real estate taxes. So, you know, the, again, we were awarded a award for promoting economic, community and economic revitalization. So we have started to see the impact of older buildings being knocked down and newer buildings being built in their place. So when that happens, when someone comes in here for development, in those cases, it substantially increases the value of the property. So we are starting to see the pipeline that started a couple of years ago come to fruition, and there's quite a large pipeline now from this year from applications, and again, next year from applications we are expecting from that. So that's, that is nice, because that's the other side of the real estate tax pendulum. You don't have to raise the real estate millage, because the assessed value is going up. So we have been aggressively working to increase that assessed value through rehabilitation, as opposed to looking at the other side of it, which is the increase in real estate tax. The trash fee residential, you'll see, pay attention to that nine percent. That's about one point four million dollars. And then other revenue, that eighteen percent, that's made up of a bunch of different things. Couple of things to note that are always under attack with the, with individuals no longer using cable as much, switching to streaming. Every year for the past five years, our cable franchise fee has gone down. The billboards that we own has become less attracted to, to advertisers as that whole economies of that industry changes. The billboard companies come to us and enacted in their contract, switching the digital LED billboard back to a status space, so we get less money for that. So there are some areas of revenue that are always under threat that we need to be mindful of and understand that they won't always be there. So what we'd like to do is evaluate, you know, all of our program revenues and see other areas that we can make more money. We're, we're expecting to increase program revenues and sponsorship revenues in the Recreation Department with the new employee, as well as we are looking at raising some of the fees associated with some of the items that we do activities for. Specifically, it's related around renting of facilities and multiple inspections of properties when inspections are failing, and we have to go back and go back and go back. And we feel that those are fees that, that, that make sense, and they're not predatory fees. They're, they're fees that hopefully will incentivize people to follow regulations and do things right the first time. Now, expenditures, everybody's favorite category. So police and crossing guards make up forty-two percent of the budget. That's six point six million dollars. Public Works Highway and sanitation together make up twenty-six percent of the budget. That's roughly about four point two million dollars. And the reason I mentioned the nine percent on sanitation last time in the relation to the thirteen percent, we're still not there with that trash fee, but as I said, the board is committed to, over the next couple of years, getting that up. Administration, we spend about one point one million dollars, seventy percent of our budget. Debt service, this is on our OPEB debt. That is one point six million dollars. That is a, really is an offset of costs that we used to incur directly out of the, the general fund. So that was a, that's a move that pays for itself. Library and seniors, one percent. Recreation, three percent. Fire Department Emergency Services, six percent. And the Fire Department Emergency Services, that's about nine hundred thousand dollars in funding we're up to there. Now, let's look at it in a little bit of a different way. So, you know, a government serves really two purposes, right? We are a regulatory body. We regulate things with the service industry. So in a service industry, you're always, number one cost is always employment. And if it's not, and you have a serious problem, you can't deliver your services. So when we look at these, this may lines up with what we would expect. Nine point, almost nine point four million in employment costs. That's all related employment costs for all employees of the township. And then the operating expenses is about four point seven. So, you know, roughly, roughly half, and that's kind of where you want to be with your mix between operating and employment costs. And then our debt service at the one point six nine, and as I mentioned earlier, that's an offset of costs, as we are no longer paying for post-retirement healthcare and benefits out of the, out of the general fund. One other item fun to look at is our liquid fuels. Liquid fuels revenues this year, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Expenditures to match. This will allow us to continually, continue our aggressive road resurfacing schedule. This board has committed, almost every year that I've been here, roughly five hundred thousand dollars a year towards repaving of roadways. The past couple of years, as we've found that we've been able to catch up, they've also been allocating those funds to upgrading ADA ramps throughout the township, as well as addressing residents' traffic calming needs through eligible expenses in the, to liquid fuels. In addition to the liquid fuels budget and the general fund budget, we have a capital fund budget. My recommendation is that we continue to manage the capital fund budget as we have in the past, which is by basically operating it on a day-to-day basis. So we, the staff and the professionals, put together these plans with these various different projects that come out from each of the departments, each of the neighborhoods. And as, as we see funding that becomes available that might match with the project, we bring that to the board. We ask the board for, for allowing us to apply for a grant application, as well as if there is a match requirement for allocating match from our bank accounts, from our capital account. We like to do it this way, because we don't feel like we get pinned into a very specific capital project plan that's not malleable. And we know that, you know, there are different things that happen throughout time, which make things more desirable. So for instance, parks became very, very desirable for funding over the past couple of years. So we attempted to fund as many parks. Right now, you're seeing a lot of talk about housing. Sometimes that switches back to infrastructure. So we like to, we like to be able to pivot based off of what the funding providers' priorities are, and then we come to the board and ask for approval for that expenditure as we go there. As you know, we aggressively manage our cash solvency, so we are not doing things in a manner that would deplete any of our accounts to, to any, any reasonable amount. So, I know that was a lot about the budget. I was trying to keep it high-level and not go into too many details, but I would say at this point, if anybody from the board has any specific questions or anything they'd love to say, I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, concerns. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, but I would like to thank George, Marco, Mike, and Caitlin for all their efforts in this, in preparing this and presenting it to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, great job. Great presentation. And I did a Commissioner Neary's comments about the team, the finance team putting it together. I think this is the first year we've had an actual full-blown presentation, so it was really well done.
Stopping it up a notch.
Thank you, George. Joe, you have any? No, thank you. I have one thing, George. You know I'm going to pick this one, the fire department.
Yes, sir.
You make me look like we're getting a lot of money, but my fire hydrants are in there too, right?
Yes, the fire hydrant is in there. It's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Oh, yeah, just wanted to make sure that was nerded.
Can't fight fires without fire.
I do. But no, thank you very much. Yes, now you want me to run, but he took a whole half hour.
Okay.
Okay, need approval of the minutes from November second, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting, and then November ninth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved with two minor, three act corrections in the caucus minutes. Second.
Any any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? So ordered. Action item number six, two thirty, Commissioner Commissioner Jim Neary will be presenting.
I'll try to be shorter than George.
Impossible.
Consider a motion ratifying the vote taken on November ninth, twenty twenty-three at the Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting under new business to provide additional funding for the EMS services of Upper Chichester Township for up to fifty thousand dollars to cover the shortfall for the year twenty twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I'd like to announce the employee service awards for twenty twenty-three. These are people who have worked for the township for a number of years. Both Jim Hutman and Charlie Romali have serviced, served this community for thirty-five years. Mark, Jason Mark, has thirty years. Rodney Myers has fifteen years. Billy Gambrell, ten years, and the following are all five years. Dan Sullivan, Alan Reeves, Chad Osborne, Gabby Gabby O'Connor, Gabrielle O'Connor, Mike Sinaglia, and Brian Warren. And I'd like, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank them for their service. Oh, and they will be presented with their awards at a later time, we have an event scheduled, so. Number eight, consider a motion accepting the real estate tax settlement agreement for parcel number zero seven, zero zero dash zero zero two two nine two dash forty-two between Upper Chichester Township and the Chichester School District, and furthermore, authorize the payment of five hundred and thirty dollars per the instructions of the settlement, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
All right. Consider a motion accepting the real estate tax settlement agreement for parcel number zero seven dash zero zero dash zero zero two two nine two dash four two between Upper Chichester Township, the Chichester School District, and Lamar Advertising of Penn LLC, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution setting the, or a motion approving the twenty twenty-four final operating budget, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing, I went out of order. Consider a motion authorizing the township treasurer to make all the necessary payments to the end of the year of twenty twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution setting the twenty twenty-four real estate tax millage at three point zero three five two mils, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion or ordinance setting the twenty twenty-four fee for collection of trash, garbage, rubbish, and refuse materials at three hundred and five dollars per residential dwelling unit, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution raising the income limit for trash collection fee exonerations to forty-five thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution amending the township fee schedule, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the real estate tax refund in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents to Mark Torres for eighteen sixteen Namens Creek Road, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the real estate tax refund in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents to Daniel Greek for two fourth four oh eight Bethel Avenue, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Upper Chichester Township audit proposal from Lightsville Economy Ds PC in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Upper Chichester Township Tax Collector Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Ds in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Upper Chichester Township Police Defined Benefit Pension Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Ds PC in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Upper Chichester Township Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economy Ds PC in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Upper Chichester Township Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Fund Audit Proposal from Lightsville Economies Economy Ds PC in the amount of twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule and authorizing the township manager to advertise the schedule in accordance with any and all applicable laws, so moved.
Second.
Any questions, George? Did we change a one in October?
Yes.
Okay, for the third.
Third Thursday. It was three changes, two of them which came out of the the caucus meeting, the elimination of the meeting on the Fourth of July, we won't have a caucus meeting on the Fourth of July. The Board of Commissioners meeting in October has been changed to the third Thursday, the third Thursday. And then for the zoning hearing board in January, they will be meeting on the third Thursday.
Not not a Monday?
They cannot meet, they're schedule conflicts, so we've had to reschedule that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-four township holiday schedule, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider an ordinance realigning the ward boundaries throughout Upper Chichester Township so as to comply with state and federal regulations relating to population changes based on the most recent United States census data, so so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, no. So ordered.
Consider a motion elevating Adam S. Biondi to the status of full-time patrol officer in the Upper Chichester Police Department effective January sixth, twenty twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Oh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion activating the Upper Chichester Township Civil Service Commission for the purpose of conducting a police officer hiring test, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the advertisement of a civil service test for the position of part-time police officer in Upper Chichester Township, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? Of the part-time officer, or should it be officers we're going after?
Expert and officer, right.
No, so doesn't matter how much we have on the list?
Doesn't.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the placement of a handicap parking-only space in the vicinity of six oh eight Taylor Avenue, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Take a break. Next action items will be read by Michael Guardiola, thirty-one through, I gotta find that last number, fifty-six. Fifty?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, sorry about that, I'm looking.
It's the Super Bowl, the Eagles.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Please bear with me as I read through all these motions, as Commissioner Neary did. Item, item number one, like the, consider resolution granting preliminary final approval for the twenty-four four zero Meeting House Road and thirty-one hundred Upland Road subdivision application.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Like to make a motion accepting it's the extension request granted to Upper Chichester for thirty thirty-three Market Street subdivision land development application.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Like to make a motion accepting the extension request granted to Upper Chichester for nine hundred Township Line Road Development Application.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Like to make a motion authorizing a township engineer to complete the final inspections for the McDonald's at six fifty-nine Conchester Highway per the applicant's request.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Item numbers thirty-five to fifty-two, I like to read them all together, make make a motion for one, read the the address and the amount, and then at the end, if we can vote unanimously on all of them, instead of reading each one individually. If not, I can read each one as is. Does, okay, all right. Okay, so let let me see if I can get get through.
They're all escrow releases, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Like to make a motion for the following escrow releases. Six fifty Cherry Tree subdivision in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and eleven cents for twenty-four Creek Circle in the amount of five thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents for twenty-four Creek Circle in the amount of six thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents for nine hundred Township Line Road zoning map amendment in the amount of one hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents for Spring Brook Industrial Project in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for Spring Brook Industrial Project in the amount of six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents for Wawa number eight eighty-one fifty-one new construction in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Again, for Wawa number eighty-one fifty-one new construction in the amount of two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents for four eight hundred sad sad plan B in the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty dollars and ninety cents for four fifty Cherry Tree Road conditional use hearing in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and zero cents for Sunoco Pipeline LP in the amount of one thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and zero cents for Wawa number eighty-one fifty-one zoning hearing board in the amount of two thousand three hundred three dollars and zero cents for Wawa number eighty-one fifty-one Saldo in the amount of one thousand two hundred seven dollars and zero cents for Wawa number eighty-one fifty-one Saldo in the amount of six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for forty-two twenty-one Namens Creek LLC in the amount of six thousand dollars for thirty thirty-three Market Street Saldo in the amount of one thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars for Wells Fargo ADA improvements in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and zero cents. Again, for Wells Fargo ADA improvements in the amount of four thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Next action might end with Commissioner Joe Biaco, number fifty-three through, I lost my page here.
The rest.
The rest. Fifty-seven.
Thank you. Consider a motion authorizing a township solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance amending chapter four eight four Solid Waste Article Three Recycling in the Upper Chichester Township Code of Ordinances, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion awarding the twenty twenty-two Program Year Community Development Block Grant, Limwood Heights Wayfair Sinus Project to Urnell Construction in the amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the purchase of one Upper Chichester Park sign for the twenty twenty-two Program Year Community Development Block Grant, Limwood Heights Wayfair Sinus Project from Casey Sign and Odings in the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the purchase of street signs for the twenty twenty-two Program Year Community Development Block Grant, Limwood Heights Wayfair Sinus Project from National Highway Products in the amount of two thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, so moved.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution making application with Delaware County Council for the twenty twenty-four PY Community Development Block Grant Program, so moved.
Second, and we need to insert the projects, insert project one was the Pete Street Pedestrian Bridge and Streamwater, and the second was the twin intersection improvements.
Right.
Correct.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to our commissioners report, we'll start with Madam Vice President, Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. All reports for my committees are on file, and I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Any questions for Commissioner Whitaker? Now, we're moving along to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you. Like to say that all the reports are available at the township office for the both financials, the budgets, the tax reports, the police report is available as well. And as I mentioned in the caucus, and and George touched upon briefly last weekend, the, actually the second, I guess, they had the shop shop with a cop program which Ray Fuller has taken under his wing. And each year, they do about twenty-five to thirty families where they provide children with toys. They actually, that Saturday, had fourteen children up at Walmart with fourteen officers who gave of their time and provided children in need with, you know, some significant presence. So I I want to thank the police department for their involvement, especially Ray Fuller in terms of of what he has done with the with that program. And I thank you and wish everyone a happy holiday season. I believe, not only is Christmas here, but I believe tonight or tomorrow night is the last night of Hanukkah as well, which I've become aware of, because of my daughter-in-law. And I wish everybody a great holiday season, despite regardless of which tradition you follow. Thanks, that's all.
Anybody have anything for Commissioner Neary?[1736.15] Anybody have anything for Commissioner Neary? Thank you. We'll move along to Commissioner Mike Gordioser.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And again, all reports are on file and inside the office. Anybody would like to see them? And just like to echo what Commissioner Whitaker and Commissioner Biaco said, like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Like to thank the staff and Harvey Department, Police Department, Board of Commissioners, or Solicitor, Engineer, or Sonographer, like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I think that's it.
Anybody have anything for Commissioner Gordioser? Move along to Commissioner Joe Biaco.
Thank you. All the reports are on file. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I don't know if you got your newsletter yet, but keep your eyes open for the new street sweeper. New one improved, a little bigger than the last one. Just want to wish everybody happy holidays and be safe.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Biaco? Now we'll move to my report, short and sweet. All my, all my reports were here last week. They're on file. If anybody wants to go see them, if anybody have any questions, and thank the board here for the additional money for the EMS. I will thank you for that. I know George, Carl, and Marco have been working at it pretty hard the last couple of weeks. But just one announcement, we did have that exercise program on Monday night. I'd say there was about thirty-six people there, a lot of outsiders from different towns. The emergency management team here has reached out to them, and they seem pretty interested in being a joint thing. As they say, with the fire department, they're doing it, the fire marshals, everybody has their issues, and they just want to joint train anything. But Delaware County, I thank Delaware County College because they're the students that were there that night. They all, we gave them an A, whether or not they get the A, we don't know. The food was good, the barbecue. And we did learn a lot. As I stated last week, we weren't there criticizing anybody. There was a few things I learned, and a lot of it's communication when you're in the field. And then there's, I think so many emergency management people didn't realize what really goes on on a scene, and they were not overwhelmed, but they were like, wow, am I going to be able to do this? And they are, because they just stepped back a little bit and were explaining what goes on. Nothing goes on perfect, and that's something. But the county was there. It, it was nice. Other than that, as everybody said here, Merry Christmas. And we'll move along to, George, I'm going to go to you so I don't forget you tonight.
Good evening, everybody.
But you only get two minutes before we should just.
All the reports are on file. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Just a reminder, next Wednesday is, next Wednesday, the twentieth, yep, the twentieth, we'll be having our volunteer and employee appreciation event. So if you can make it, please make it so we can recognize all the people that work around here to make this all work. And other than that, it'll be from, I believe, three-thirty to five, two-thirty to five-thirty. I'll get an email out to everybody. Ed, you'll be due back sooner than that because we'll have to sign a bunch of resolutions. The rest of you, January second at seven-thirty will be the reorganization meeting. Thank you.
George, speaking of the reorganization, you did mention the zoning board is going to pick on alternate night to meet besides that one. Did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So they are meeting, right?
Yes, they have a, they'll have a hearing on the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
And we're still having a caucus Thursday night too, right?
You're scheduled for the reorganization meeting, the caucus meeting, and the board meeting.
Okay, just making sure. All right, now move along to the professionals, move along to our engineer, Lisa Catania. Catania, engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, I will tell you that I went through my report last week. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Please don't drink and drive. Find a, an alternate route. Be safe, be smart, and we'll see you in the upcoming year.
Yes. Lisa, just one quick question, just so we could put it to bed for the end of the year.